Thank you. All right, land acknowledgement. We'd like to acknowledge that we are on a traditional land of rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. All right. Any, it looks like we have a full agenda and we have all consultants online, so that looks good. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at the meeting minutes? From February 11th last month? And if so, please feel free to speak up with any changes, edits, otherwise we'd love a motion to approve if we're all in agreement. They look good. I think you were talking, Shuri.
Yes, they look good. I move that we approve the minutes.
Thank you. Any second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Great. Meeting date, we are looking at, let's see, April. My computer's slow here. April 8th. Does anybody have any conflicts or prayer commitments, or can we expect a full house again?
Oh.
We're all there.
Okay, I'll be there.
You'll be absent? Okay, I'm having a really hard time hearing you guys. I think I saw David's gonna be out. I recall Sam had some conflicts, but not in April. It's gonna be more towards the summer, so it's not, I think we'll have a quorum. Um, okay, is anybody else in the room there? Do we have any public comments?
No.
No public comments already? Then we'll hand it over to you, Councilmember Lebo, please.
Thank you. So I'd like to give you an update. So since our last meeting, we had a budget finance committee meeting, and so we reviewed the year-end finances before. And need to say that the city is still financially solvent. Um, you know, a lot of credit goes to Director Lindsey Bond and the way that the budget and the mayor put together the overall. So we were very pleased that we're generally on target, and so it was nice to finish up the year as well. We had a council meeting on February 24th, and your distinguished Director Hart Hoffman gave a community development department update on the current project. And talked about the 2024 comprehensive review, middle housing, climate element incentives for work. As well as looking forward to working on the sign ordinance. And the critical areas ordinance update. Actually, it's a long list of items that are open for the planning commission to work on. Um, well received by the council, so in terms of direction and progress. Very good. And that was followed up on the 27th, where Director Hoffman actually reviewed the 2025 work plan for the planning commission. We also heard from the Climate Action Committee Tree Board and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. All of the work plans were well received by the council, and there is a, now I'll say this, a very positive reaction by the council to all the work that the commissions and boards are doing and recognizing that these are volunteer positions. And very appreciative of the work that are being done by so many talented individuals who are spending their time on these evenings and weekends. To work on these commissions and boards. We also had a council retreat on Saturday, March 1st, and the areas that we talked about were workload for the council coming up with regard to the sound BRT project of permitting. Public work challenges, as well as a discussion of filling our financial gaps that we see going forward in our overall budget revenue. There was some discussion about the HR challenges for staffing of human resources within the department. We have a lot of new hires, and there are lots of demand on our HR department, which is one person. There's not much bench strength there, so it may come up in the mid-year review to look at staffing for our human resource department. We also had a discussion about the survey priorities, which were identified as leasing parks, sidewalks, and a desire to have a grant writer to help bring in revenue for the city. There is good discussions about improving mobility infrastructure around Lake Forest Park, roads, sidewalks. Consideration for safety and financial fiscal impact, or fiscal impacts. As well as looking at equity and opportunities for creating connections throughout the city, so that we are putting improvements spread around the city and not just in one particular area. There were discussions about safety on Buffalo Way, lowering the speed limit. You may have noticed that a section of Buffalo Way has already been lowered to 35 miles an hour. The council and the staff continue to look and explore with Washington State Department of Transportation opportunities to lower the speed limit in the remaining section of Lake Forest Park on Buffalo Way, also 35 miles an hour. Um, again, we had a robust discussion about our financial stability plan and looking at opportunities to balance our revenue and expenditures. So one of the things the council will be considering this year is a levy increase. And there's gonna be a robust discussion about that in April, so if you have any ideas or suggestions, please share with Director Hoffman or myself. So we will be discussing over the next several months whether we wish to go for a levy and what the levy might include. We heard through the survey result that the citizens are looking for clearly defined scopes of work. And that they're looking for transparency and that it be time limited. You may recall in the last proposition, the levy increase did not sunset. And there was consideration that perhaps the projects adjusted were not well defined. So we are gonna be talking about trying to define the projects with clarity and transparency and making decisions about what the levy might be. Uh, there was a good discussion about increasing housing availability. Including an emphasis on affordability, diversity, and increasing. There was some discussion about creating a land bank or trade options, so we'll be exploring that. We don't have a lot of surplus property in Lake Forest Park, so that may be a bit of a challenge. Uh, there is discussion about increasing the detail of the critical areas inventory through more accurate details of the wetlands and unstable slopes. And then finally, uh, we are still looking at the end of the year hiring a climate, climate, sorry, climate plan administrator. We are funding that position through an increase in our waste utilities, so garbage. So we are looking at increasing the revenue through that to help pay for the climate plan administrator. Any questions?
You're all discussing middle housing affordability, first day summit law alignment around that. I wonder if there's opportunities for us to make sure that we are in alignment, continue to be in alignment around these conversations, make sure that work.
There is interest in it. Uh, there is no definition of what that looks like. There is a desire, for example, to increase the use of accessory dwelling units in Oregon to kind of, that's what I'm saying, accessory dwelling. There are incentives within the master plan for the town center, but the owner of the town center has not chosen to go in.
Then just another wish of a great goal or incentive, you were saying that would be more, create some clarification around it. What is that?
So primarily mapping, and there's not yet a defined program, but there is an interest in improving that because there will be, as properties get developed, people will want to understand, are they in a critical areas? And so we go to the maps, it's pretty good. So it's on a side-by-side basis. Thank you.
So you guys really haven't been up to very much, huh? Just kidding. Thank you for that. Are there any, any other questions before we dive right into middle housing?
Got a question for the chair. We have two members of the public arrived during this last segment, and we had already gone past public comment, so if the chair would entertain it, I'd ask if these persons are here to comment or just to listen to.
I'm a local developer builder of middle housing type product, and I was in City Hall just this last week, spoke with one of the gals, and she had some good thoughts on it, but there was definitely not a lot of clarity about it yet. And right now, being one of the big issues as a developer builder, to make affordable housing for what we're trying to accomplish with the new HB 1110. I have to be able to create clarity so that I can pursue the expensive nature of tying up properties and holding them and then entitling them and then ultimately building them. It's a very expensive, you know, process to do. So I was looking at a project here in the city, and there wasn't very much clarity, so the planning gal invited me to come and said, hey, they're doing a big talk on finalizing the middle housing codes, legislation, and probably enjoy hearing from somebody that is actually out there buying the dirt, titling it, figuring out how to build it with our new expensive costs. And either share a few thoughts, but also she said, hey, consultants are here, the city director's here that's spearheading it, and you have an opportunity to chat with them, connect with them. So I was purely coming to create some more clarity around it so that I can hopefully look forward with doing a neat middle housing project here in Lake Forest Park. So that's my goal with attending is to potentially ask a few intelligent questions. It doesn't have to be to the whole group, but my goal was like, hey, I come and talk with the city director and some of the consultants and understand a little bit more, so purely here for that.
Mark, you wanna just say where we are in the process, like us, and then it goes to the council, just so that we're all clear of kind of.
Yeah, I can give a little bit of clarity. Give those, I mean, one of the chat questions, just to make sure that we're all.
Jonathan Kurt. Yes, yes, yes.
And do you live in Lake Forest Park or do you live?
I do not. I live in the Queen Anne neighborhood, but I, yeah, my biggest struggle right now with developing in Seattle is our lots are not big enough to do middle housing well. We've been doing all those three packs, doesn't work very well. So we're trying.
Jonathan, welcome to our, our meeting. I didn't catch your last name. And hi, my name's Madeline Larson, Maddie Larson. Jonathan, what's your last name?
K U R T H. And my, one of my companies is Seattle Luxury Homes. And I have a development company as well. We've been doing cottage communities, smaller homes. We also have to do the big expensive homes to make money too, but.
Can, can you, can you name for us a few of the cottage developments that, you know, are the middle housing developments that you're, you're inquiring about with the city and wanting to spark conversation with us about?
Yeah, so our recent project I just finished, it was my Maple Leaf project over in the Maple Leaf neighborhood. And now I just sold that project about four or five months ago. And then before that project, I did six homes in the Blue Ridge neighborhood. And that was like another small subdivision. And so I've been, and right now I'm building 14 townhouses in downtown Edmonds, right on Fifth Avenue downtown, with kind of the same idea. Edmonds, it took three years to get our permits on that, and now I'm building a big fancy house in Madison Park.
What's, what's the range of selling prices for these recent projects, these three projects you mentioned, like kind of ballpark?
We've been seeing a normal, larger house, usually in, I've got desirable neighborhoods as we could. And those would range from one and a half to two million on those homes. And then the cottages would range from 700 and higher because we build really nice cottages with good yards and good amenities, and those things will get bid up. And we, we got as high as like 850 on one of those cottages, which was 1,000 square feet. And I'm looking at stuff that is 400 to 500 square feet, little cottages over a garage. We're looking at 800 square feet, we're looking at 1,000, we're looking at 1,200. Trying to find that right unit where there's so much stuff for less than a million. Because with our weird economy, a weird real estate market, cost very high on land and construction, some entitlement processes, cities are not very established, so we gotta deal with that. We're seeing in middle housing, for me, with me recently selling stuff, building stuff. Our way to actually bring more housing to the market is to build these smaller homes. Because I sell a house for 1.7 million, my buyer has to put $350,000 down to buy a house. 1.7 is almost like a new normal price for like a newer house, even a nice house older.
Hey, Jonathan, I'm sorry to chime in here. We do have to limit public comments. And then the other thing too is, I'm sorry, but we have consultants on here that this is the very last time we get to see them, and we have a a pretty significant deadline ahead of us for June. And so I, I think I can probably speak for the commission here when I say we're, we're definitely interested in hearing about this and learning more about this. This is certainly an area that we've all flagged as being really high importance for us. But since I can't really see in the room there, Mark, I'm kind of looking to you to see how, how are we on time and do we need to kind of keep, keep moving with the agenda, then we can come back to public comment towards the end, like follow the agenda if that works for everyone?
To address Yanni's comment, I'll keep it to 60 seconds. We have a project page with more reading than you care to run into. The importance of tonight is that we have SCJ Alliance and Leland Consulting Group with us. With a series of questions that have been discussed since last night. Where we're at is we passed the comprehensive plan in 2024, that was the goal and policy level, supporting middle housing. This is the development regulations that applies to specific properties and zoning. So this would amend the Lake Forest Park municipal code, specific to the sections that are in the material. The importance of tonight is that on July 1st, we would be subject to a model ordinance by Commerce. And every point after that, not just, yeah. So the consensus is, let's pass Lake Forest Park specific amendments and then keep the work going and address or at least consider other areas, not stop with just meeting the mandate by July 1st. This is the planning commission, they make, they hold a public hearing, they make a recommendation on draft amendments. That goes to the city council, three meetings at least, and full understanding of another public hearing and action by the end of June. Somewhere in there, I need 60 days to send a work effort to Department of Commerce for their review. They will not be granting expedited review, so tomorrow I will have to consider that issue because if we can't find consensus in the three to five questions that SCJ and Leland need tonight. Or at least have a path. I can't send that to Commerce. Now, we can change it, we can amend it, but not significantly. We can make it better. We can tweak it here and there without changing the overall meaning of the ordinance in their review. And still stay, stay consistent. So that seems to be our plan between now and the April meeting. Take care of the Commerce and then begin the next phase of having that conversation at council, so it's not just thrown at them all at once. And so to have that, we've asked Leland to join SCJ and be here in present, answer questions, prepare the materials. The packets are rather expensive. Some or most is from Edwerden in January, but it's very specific at this point. So that's the background. There are two slide presentations that we forwarded yesterday, and I think Zoe of SCJ would like to go first.
Yes, we're gonna start off if it's all good for me to dive in.
Please.
Okay, awesome. So then I'm gonna start sharing my screen. And for items on our side, there are a lot that we need to decide on and discuss and make decisions on as it comes to the edits. I specifically have listed out the different chapters right here, chapter 17 and chapter 18, where edits were made regarding both unit lot subdivisions and middle housing and ADU edits. So to go through all of these, I'd figure we'd start with 17, since we didn't get to that in the February meeting. Provide a refresher on what unit lot subdivisions are, why we're talking about it, review the draft code and discuss the edits. And decide on whether to include this in the middle housing ordinance or not. Then we'll go into chapter 18, discuss next steps after that and move forward. Does that all sound good to folks? Perfect. I'm just gonna keep it on this sort of screen share, just so it doesn't ruin my speaker view stuff, but the reason we're talking about unit lot subdivisions is because on top of all the other state legislation that was passed during the middle housing, during the housing element time period. Also, SB 5258 was passed, which essentially said local governments must adopt the following to be in conformity with state requirements on that same timeline as the middle housing. However, there's not the model ordinance associated with it, but essentially, Lake Forest Park shall include within their short flat regulation procedures for unit lot subdivisions, allowing the division of a parent lot into separately owned unit lots. And the portions of a parent lot shall not, not subdivided for individual lots shall be owned in common by the owners of the individual lots or by an HOA, for example. To explain what this means is essentially parent lot, unit lots of the two little ones there, or the zero lot line subdivision that comes up in the middle housing ordinance as something the city must allow for. So it's, it goes to that question regarding the transfer of ownership for different sides of the duplex, for the cottage units, for ADUs. It regards that piece overall with it. And then the zero lot line subdivision essentially says different individuals could own the different sides of a duplex. Or with a single family residential unit, somebody else can own the attached ADU. So it regards that aspect. This is also how a unit lot subdivision can look. It regards short subdivisions, which is where we've included it in the code, which regards under four or fewer lots. Subdivision is five or more lots, and then lot split is parent lot, separated into basically two lots where one can be less than the required minimum lot size. But these are just some of the background on this subject to provide it for folks. Is everybody with me? I hope I did a not-so-rushed job in explaining that. To get into then how chapter 17 was edited based on this piece of legislation. We changed the definitions section to regard parent lot and unit lot and the grouping of those. It's in page 14 of the packet, if y'all have it in front of you or have it on different screen. There was question, there were questions regarding the grouping of lot, parent lot, and unit lot, all being right next to each other, but separated out differently. That is something, if there is confusion, we can change it up to move things. But I think that's one aspect to just kind of give a pause on for the definitions section. If that seemed to find a folks, if there are comments. I'm giving a pause to folks to give time to read. And I can also pull it up on my screen, but I know it's hard with the presentation.
A lot of us have already looked at this.
What was that?
So a lot of us have already reviewed this because you guys.
Yeah. So I guess the question is for the group, does it look good? Does it look fine? Do we move on?
Looks good this tab. I think we can move on because otherwise they're separate. And unless you read all the definitions, you don't run into.
Okay. Wait. Then the next section that was edited was the 17.12 for inclusion of unit lot subdivision throughout. And specifically, 17.1290 is where the largest bulk of the changes were made for the state guidance. That can get tweaked as needed. And then per Commissioner Castix edits, we included section J, which regards tree canopy coverage. For folks. Any words missing or edits along these sections?
I appreciate Commissioner Castix reiterating that word.
As far in regard to J, and I also showed that to Drew, Urban Forest Planner, and she, in the middle of the conversation, was asking for that very as I was conveying that it's in the draft. That's perfect.
Okay, awesome, good. Sweet. So then I guess my next question on the subject overall is would the group like this to be included within the middle housing ordinance overall or separated out into a different ordinance to go through separately because the timeline is not tied to the model ordinance?
Uh, feedback from council and city attorneys, we should go through with middle housing.
Okay, cool.
And not.
Good, no.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Um, I mean, I, I'll, I'll say that this is a lot of information quickly, you know, to process. I know we got the material on Friday, but um, it's, I still, I have like a lot of questions and I don't think that they should be all posed here because I know we have a lot to get through, but just in short, with all of this language and these definitions and so forth, does this in effect just sort of remove underlying zoning? Like if, if, if a person were to build, say, duplex on a, I don't know, uh, you know, RS95. Um, and, and it's subdivided, is then it's still RS95 or does that underlying zoning change? I don't understand the relationship between our current zoning map and if any of those underlying um, designations would still apply or if it would be different. Like is there common ownership over the lot still and it's not actually subdivided like with the county or?
There, there's no change to the zoning map. There's no change to the zoning applied to any of the lots in the city. The title of the zoning designation's changed because we can't use single-family anymore. Then we're adding mandated development regulations within those zones without changing the zone. One of the side conversations was we should consolidate. We can still consider that. I would offer, we're out of time before June, but it's very valid. Then from there, the unit lot subdivision and the changes to the subdivision ordinance kind of move it closer to condo minimization ownership, but don't change zoning, still residential. You get more dwelling units.
So if, if the parent lot is, is just for even numbers, let's call it, you know, RS 10,000. And it's split into a unit lot one and unit lot two are, is the full. Are, is the fullness of the original parent lot still a whole piece of property? With two housing units on it or, or is it now, are there now two five thousand square foot? Independently owned lots?
It, it, it's not mirroring traditional zoning. It's not halving the minimum lot size. Lot size, lot size stays the same. I can't talk anymore. Lot size stays the same. What the, the LPI is doing is saying you could have multiple ownerships and multiple units on one lot.
Okay.
And then an HOA or some agreement and so. On the video, same minimum lot size for now.
In, in both of these scenarios that are up on the board right now, the subdivision and zero lot line subdivision. Um, in both cases, are those, is, is there an HOA like that? That governs that, or do they have like that is, this is my property and that's your property?
Say it's an agreement. That looks very like an HOA.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, Mark, for filling in there. Okay, with that, I'm gonna move. To chapter eighteen, if folks are good. Seemed like we got that kind of out of the way in the direction on where to go from with this whole chapter. Okay. With the edits made on chapter eighteen, I wanted to start us off by having a conversation regarding unit density. As this had come up during the February planning commission meeting, and I wanted to provide a little bit of a refresher as well as discuss. What's in the um state guidance for middle housing specifically? So the whole pieces with the state legislation that was passed goes down to that two units per lot conversation and what really equals. Two units per lot with middle housing and ADUs. With the guidance that was given by Commerce, they said that tier three cities are required. To do the situation on, or at least required. To do the situation on the left, which is allowing for the following configurations of one principal unit and two ADUs. Or two principal units duplex sort of situation, just must allow for. Other options tier three cities may take, but are not required to take is the two principal units, one ADU, two principal units, two ADUs. It's just whether or not ADUs count towards unit density or not. Gonna pause if there are questions on that explanation or if folks seem to have a grasp of what is meant there. To show how it comes up in the current code. I mean, in current draft code, slides a little bit messy, but I wanted to show the track changes for y'all. Is. Unit density currently comes up under the definition section that unit density means the number of dwelling units allowed on a lot regardless of lot size. Under the RS zones for each of them, that's where we've included the line regarding a single middle housing dwelling. Made up of two units of any of the following configurations where we then list the middle housing types. Under the southern gateway, single family residential zone. We also included that middle housing language for making those two units. And then in using the uh maximum density calculations. Maximum density allowed in this zone can be no less than two units. Just saying like that maximum cannot be less than, adjusting that accordingly. And then in the ADU section, because that was heavily tracked changed, I did a simpler version of it of just showing that up to two accessory dwelling units. Maybe permitted on a lot with a single family dwelling. If a lot is developed with two principal units in. Uh, meeting the definition of middle housing such as a duplex, then no accessory dwelling unit is permitted on that lot. To address that required change. As shown in the previous slide, does this feel good enough or should there be more direct language stating the two units per lot? On lot zone, predom- predominantly residential.
Say per our conversation last time, this, I mean, we're. Leaning towards just doing what we're calling the minimum in this, this wave of activity. As you know, I have some frustration with that, but I think this conversation about allowing more. Is something we really need to have some urgency around once we finish this body and we're gonna get it to council. For example, if, if you go back to that track changes slide you were just on, there's, there's something really kind of. A little bit of a non sequitur here and some of our, you know, what used to be called single family zones. We're saying we're gonna allow cottage housing, but we're only saying you can have two units. So you, if I were a developer, you're, you're saying, well, you could build two full-size houses. Or two little cottages on the same damn property, and that's where we need to be talking about incentives. How do we incentivize smaller scale homes? And let people build more of them than the two, because right now, courtyard apartments, cottage housing, we're gonna see zero. Of that, because we're saying it's still just two. So that's why I think this is gonna be important. I understand we're kind of out of time to. Make those decisions thoughtfully, okay, but we need to get on that. Um, once we transmit this to council.
I just have to say, Yanni, I wasn't at the last meeting and I feel like you, you had like. Uh, it was very clear what your position was. And, and I think I just want to say for myself, since I wasn't able to represent myself last time. I hear you. We've had private conversations about this. Absolutely, we need incentives. Um, but they need to be tied that we actually achieve the things we want. And so like. I don't think you need to worry about anybody here like, you know, not agreeing with you. We all want those things. But we need to move on from this, you know, we, we get it. We're, we're, yes, we need to work on those things next, but let's wrap this up, okay?
And for clarity for the commission, I would say this ordinance, right? The city can adopt a series of ordinances. This ordinance needs to be in place before the mandate. There can be a second ordinance, there could be a third ordinance. And so if we speak in those terms. And you go back to that slide with the two options. If you have an ordinance that meets the mandates of House Bill eleven, ten and thirteen thirty-seven in the guidance. That's supported by Commerce. Then you can examine the tools. The second half of this meeting is with Leland to start talking about those tools. So that effort doesn't need to wait. It's happening tonight. But I would offer if you, if you decide this question tonight about required or optional. If you go optional, you're giving benefit that you can then not likely consider later in your incentives. Say that again, sorry. So if you, if you adopt the required mandate and meet uh GMA. Right, in that ordinance, then you have the second one, the optional, and every other increase. Cottage housing, the six other types of housing types to consider with your incentives. But if you grant the optional one in this ordinance. You can't then take it away and then say, oh, it's an incentive, it's in the books. So the advantage of having an ordinance with the required is. Everything above that is considered in the mix with along with the incentive tool, which we will talk about.
Are folks feeling good? I mean, as good as we can be given.
Yep.
And then I guess with the changes that are reflected in the draft code as of now, do we feel that? It reflects the two units per lot requirement?
But uh, well, two questions, maybe this is the right time before we can, can finish these slides and so forth. Two primary questions came up at the last meeting. Is the November guidance from Commerce not minimum or whatever is a mandate? Yes, it is. I was part of the sausage making on the first guidance. The, the purpose of House Bill eleven ten, the purpose of thirteen thirty-seven and meeting both purposes. That's where you have the, the duplex and the two ADUs. Somehow in the last guidance, they sandwiched them further together and you get this weird option of no duplex, but two ADUs. Not sure why, but that's the current guidance. And so if you, if you go with that version, it confirms um what was asked last time, is, is that the mandate? Yes, it is. And we're covered by the Commerce guidance, so we're not just taking it, staying in the dark at risk. Uh, the second one is, uh, would this apply to this, the shoreline jurisdiction? It appears it would. The difficulty, because the shoreline jurisdiction consists of properties that are zone. This would change the development regulations for those zones, so it would apply. There would be a weird interpretation about we better update our shoreline master program very quickly. Because ADUs currently are not even allowed in the shore. So, and then there's language that the city attorney is looking at about which one takes precedence. It doesn't seem that because we have an SMP, the zone goes away. So to me, this only applies, these changes would apply to those properties. For us, it may not matter because all those properties are fully developed. Single family or low density residential as is, so it may not have an impact. But it may necessitate us updating the shoreline master program a little quicker than, um, than we thought we would be. To incorporate this. So that, so, but it all goes to that basic question about what I sent to Commerce. If the commission consensus is a mandate. And then continue with the incentives and everything above the mandate in a conversation. And include things like for uh getting rid of the French requirement. That is something that I can send to Commerce with these amendments in SCJ. That would not significantly change until we have another ordinance. That, that seems to be the primary question before we. Finish any of the other small, smaller questions. And then I think we had a stronghold in the February meeting. And then um we brought Leland in tonight more for the incentives conversation. To give assurance that that conversation is not gonna die or that it's not considered important. But I think for Zoe's slides and these amendments. Nothing shows like more than the previous one. Required versus the opposite. So I, I think that's where we're at, and I don't know if you have another slide or two.
Oh, I have a couple different slides left still. Cause we have to talk about the ADU sizing, which was something we didn't get to in February. That's actually on my next slide, if we feel good to jump to that. Okay, I saw one thumbs up despite it being a very, very tiny screen for me. Okay. So, under thirteen thirty-seven. The legislation states that a city or county may not establish a maximum gross floor area requirement for an ADU that is less than a thousand square feet. Your code before had a maximum ADU sizing of a thousand square feet. And it still is a thousand square feet because the floor can also be the ceiling in this case. But just to open up the conversation, there is no state required maximum for ADU sizing. Only that the maximum cannot be less than a thousand square feet. So this really, when it comes to the sizing conversation, is to help determine what is the difference between a lot that just has a single family residence. And then ADU and then two units of cottage housing. How do those get separated out in the process there? Do we want to just keep it to a thousand or do we want to change that?
Does anyone have a strong feeling on that?
Seems like we're currently in compliance, right, or current, our current. So I'm not sure why we would tinker without a good understanding of it now, since we're gonna do a bunch of other changes later, but. I would suggest we don't need to discuss that one.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, unless somebody has a compelling reason to deviate from it. It's fine by me to stay with a thousand, minimum max ceiling. Seeing head nods, so we're good, Zoe.
Cool, that makes my life easy, sweet. Is there something in the room?
Sorry.
Okay.
It's really hard to hear the room, right? Zoom people, still?
A little bit.
Okay, so if we're a little delayed on the Zoom side, guys, it's because we can't really understand what you're saying.
Okay, this slide here provides an overview of all the changes that were made in chapter eighteen. Gonna probably take some time with this slide, just so folks can see where in the packets things were made. Um, and go through as needed for any comments that there are on the sections that were heavily edited. But the most heavily edited sections were definitions, zoning map, changes to the RS zones. Uh, regarding the southern gateway, single family residential zone. And then the ADU language that is in both eighteen fifty fifty and eighteen fifty sixty. I can start by going through these different sections. I'm gonna also say that we are done with this one and we are done with the ADU sizing. So those things have been addressed now.
Uh, please see. Discuss change zoning names.
Yeah, I can explain that one now if people would like.
Sure.
Jump into that one, yeah. So for the middle housing legislation, a lot of the previous zones for RS. And uh, southern gateway, single family residential have the term single family within them. Because we are now allowing two units per lot on them, it begs the question as to. Whether these zones need to be removed since it's no longer single family only zoning. It needs to be changed to low density in some of these cases. I think that's what we made in the edits for southern gateway. Is we changed it to southern gateway, low density residential, LDR. And then for the residential, single family RS zones, we changed that to just residential. With then the different sizing. And so the question with the decisions here is kind of just a cleaning up of the code of should all those get changed? Is that change acceptable? Any other options?
Staff cares, right, though, it's always clear to the people who live here and. You know. It'll necessitate some clarity that your zoning is not changing. But that's what we call it in the binder is, right? So um, the zoning map's not changing, your zoning is not changing. We're adding these amendments, we're increasing density in units per, per lot. Um, and so for right now, it's that clarity that needs to be conveyed that doesn't really change a whole lot. Where it matters to staff is the next step when we consider consolidating. And then what we end up calling the twelve median five. These changes implement what we did with the land use designations in conference.
Zoe, are you talking about like the RS twenty, RS fifteen, RS ten, that?
Yeah, and residential, single family, yeah.
And what you're thinking about um residential versus. I guess I don't understand. It, it's all still residential. There's nothing in there that says it's single family. It just says residential.
So previously, and I hope my screen hasn't, does it show the presentation or does it show the code?
Very small, though.
Ah, okay, okay, I'll zoom in. Um, it's seriously just a title change as its main component, but it goes down to just. That housekeeping item of its RS because it's single family residential low. And all of the RS zones need to get changed from being just single family zoning. As they were previously.
R twenty, R fifteen, R ten, but we'd still have RM for the mixed.
Yeah. Cause RM is higher density than just single family, so.
Thank you.
I know where the change came here of including those two units. Okay, since in a quiet room, I'm assuming the R is fine and that folks understand. Okay, since in a quiet room, I'm assuming the R is fine and that folks understand. There is the tricky thing with the southern gateway, single family residential zone. That there are also design guidelines that state it as. Southern gateway, single family residential zone. Design guidelines. And if we change the zoning name there. That also needs to get changed throughout those design guidelines. Nothing, no additional language is getting changed. It's just. Going in there and striking it out and replacing the language. But whatever it gets changed to will need to be done as part of this process. What was that?
Better to do it now.
And then my question I know from Mark was the process for those design guidelines, getting them. Passed through if that needs its own SEPA review, since it's a separately adopted document, it is not within. Code other than by reference.
Haven't given any thought, but it's likely. Disordinance will have to incorporate it.
Okay.
But we have time for that.
Yeah.
It's the commerce thing that's. Blooming.
Are folks fine with the change to southern gateway, low density residential?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Great, that is another item that we can check off. Awesome, um. So. Done. Done. And then overall general language probably should go down to the ADU section for review. Cause I think, oh, wait, before I do, I did want to flag that there was an edit made to the RS zones to also include. Tree canopy coverage within. For the discussion last time. I believe this was Commissioner Castix exact edits there. Folks also found that good to include within each of the RS zones. Or now our zones. I heard yes.
Multiple locations that urban forest planner thanks you.
Okay, good to know, good to know. Three. Yeah, then we'll.
For the video in background, the purpose of middle housing is to rise. To increase unit count at market rate and rise it in priority. Without negative negatively affecting the other priorities in the community, which is critical areas and trees. And shoreline. And so adding J to these sections makes it very clear that you you cannot just chop down all the trees to to make your unit count. And to continue to the to be critical. I I shouldn't say unaffected because I haven't analyzed it, not negatively affected it. Still a priority.
Yes. Um I am trying to go down to the ADU section at this moment, so that gets. Also head nods from folks on how to address. It's on page seventy five of the packet and. There it is on my screen. We discussed sizing.
Uh you're still sharing presentation.
Ah, okay. Yep. Here were all the edits for eighty years. You know, I can turn off track changes if it's too messy for folks and you just wanna. See, since this was significantly edited to address things. I think we reworked the garage conversion section since the last area, so. F under here. Oh man. There are any edits that stand out. Folks have sections they want to flag. Giving space for that now.
Any comments or thoughts on this section from anyone? Are we all all good with the changes?
Staff has no comments because it's mandated by thirteen thirty seven. So I know that the city um did a very detailed look at ADUs and did amendments prior. This this is a result of the legislature passing House Bill thirteen thirty seven.
Okay, so then this is good as it stands.
Okay, are there any other sections within the code when people were reviewing even just the memo that they wanted to flag? For discussion?
Doesn't sound like it.
Okay. My my next slide is really just showing next steps.
Actually, sorry, I couldn't find my my unmute button fast enough. Um can you remind me, so you struck on um, I guess what's now F. Uh under the accessory drilling unit. Uh you struck only if same number of off-street parking spaces are provided. Was that? Was that because the state law? Pardon?
It had um regarding thirteen thirty seven's parking requirements that were associated.
We can't require parking for ADUs.
It was. Oh, I do not. This is like my weakest area of this legislation.
Well, we don't have to figure it out now, but I just want to flag that if it's not uh required by law for us to not have parking, I would say that's. Continues to be for a variety of reasons an issue, so I would only say. The language is fine if we're being forced to do it, but if we're not, I I wouldn't be comfortable striking that sentence. Personally.
Andrew, I'm gonna tap you in as another housing legislation. Expert on this area if you happen to know.
I believe it is required. Uh I I mean, I believe you can't require it, but I'm not hundred percent sure, so now I don't want to go on the record.
Yeah, that's my thing. We will be looking into it.
Yeah, I just said I want to not say like, oh, hey, look, it looks fine. I just want to flag that if it's required to get it, but if it's not, I would like us to. See if anybody else agrees with me that we want to keep it in.
Looking at the memo that's sent out, it's the additional provisions are as follows. No off-street parking shall be required within one half mile walking distance of a major transit stop. So that looks like the language that's. It's required.
I'm just looking at page sixty four and it looks like you're addressing this there, right, regarding off-street parking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Both the ADU legislation and the middle housing legislation add off-street parking. Um bits to them. So.
I I see, so you're stripping it out of the one uh item and putting it in its own. Section. Thanks. Thank you, um Melissa. That that's helpful. It's it's H now. I missed that. I apologize.
Oh, yeah, okay. Her accessory, yeah. I was gonna say, cause I was thinking.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasted our time. Yeah, no. That's great, we can.
Okay, if we're all good to move on, I do have next steps shown here. Finalizing the decisions. I am gonna still do a confirmation on that parking piece. I know there was H, but. Just I know it's my weaker area. Um we're gonna be putting this into ordinance ordinance formatting, there's SEPA. Sixty day commerce review, public hearings, and then future work with the one point five options as discussed for. Leland's memo. Um if folks sound good, I can toss it over to Leland.
Thanks, Zoe.
Yeah, thanks so much, Zoe.
No problem, happy to help.
Um, yeah, are we ready to transition?
Let's do it.
All right. Let me just share my screen. Uh well, yeah, David, I just looked it up in in the legislation, so. Lots smaller than six thousand square feet, no more than one off-street parking space may be required. On lots greater than six thousand square feet, no more than two off-street parking spaces per unit for ADUs may be required. And off-street parking may not be required within one half mile major transit, so. I think that fits with what you had in there.
Right. Great, well. Good evening, all. Again, good to be back back with you. I know we couldn't join you in the previous meeting. Um. And as already has been discussed today, there's a a lot of items that sort of we want to discuss with you today. Um that have been, we've sort of skirted around or discussed at a high level um. Throughout our process working together, both in the comp plan and this middle housing work. And so I'll briefly introduce that, um though maybe don't need to introduce it much, because we've sort of been talking about it already in the last hour. But really here to discuss in more detail some of the recommendations that were in our our middle housing report that was provided. You know, long ago to you and and again more recently, um but that we hadn't had a chance to sort of dive into in detail or or had enough. Time during our meetings to really discuss um or for you all to ask more questions. And then we'd heard from you some further clarifying questions you'd had, so we've pulled together some some basic case studies and a little more information around some of these. Um you know, potential incentives to include for affordability. Um a look at some of your dimensional standards in your code that go beyond those that Zoe and and you all have been discussing already, ADU location. Um as another potential item for further uh consideration. Um but I just wanna wanna reiterate, no decisions are needed to be made today on these items, right? The decisions that were made previously sounds like we are in good shape in terms of moving forward with this initial code update. And then these will be sort of a part of your parking lot or or moving forward for future discussion and and future code updates. Um as our understanding, so. With that, that kind of is what is already is said on this this slide here already, but um. Right, moving forward with June of this year to make sure we hit that deadline for those meeting those minimum requirements um of HB eleven, ten and thirteen thirty seven. Um but we've heard throughout this whole process and we heard reiterated earlier from your your council liaison here. I'm a desire to explore potential for um middle housing to create more affordable units, to expand availability and diversity. And general affordability within your housing supply, particularly for owner ownership, but I think it'd be, it would be. Bullish to exclusively focus on ownership. Um rental housing is certainly needed um in your community and throughout the region. Uh but I know there's been a particular interest in that as well. Um and again, beyond this this code update timeline, and so. Yeah, looking into some options around bonuses, incentives, dimensional standards, ADUs, as I always said, or already said. Um so we provided that that brief memo to you that sort of explained some of this in a little more detail, which again is really pulling some content out from our that larger report. And then adding on some supplementary um information. Uh and so really we just want to foster sort of a discussion here with you all today and answer any questions that we can, we won't. Andrew and I probably won't be able to answer all of your questions, um depending how how dive we we end up deeping or how how dive. How deep we end up diving, excuse me. Um but let's get into it. So some of the incentives for affordability that we have talked about throughout. Um so affordability in middle housing, so and these are pulling from, you know, best practices, things that are also included in the the model ordinances. Or required maybe of tier one and two cities in Washington, or that you see all around the region being utilized uh in communities. Large and small, um and and nationwide even, but affordable unit density bonuses, right? So what are we talking about here? Basically allowing additional units beyond your minimum, which in this case is is duplex. Um in exchange for some level of affordability. Eighty percent area median income is what we're putting here, but that's just as an example. Uh the the important part about. Well, really about all of these tools or strategies we're talking about is that there's no silver bullet, right? And it's it it needs to be carefully calibrated to your local housing market and. Continue to be updated and calibrated as the market shifts. Um if you require some level of affordability, there's a chance you could just stop. Any um any sort of feasibility of of that housing being constructed without other. Perhaps concessions or incentives, um and depending on the affordability level that you're requiring. Um so a little more sort of background on this, and we've discussed this a little bit. Uh within uh HB eleven, ten for tier one in two cities. Uh they are required to allow allow additional density if some units are affordable at sixty percent AMI for rental housing and eighty percent for ownership. So that's just just an example. And oftentimes jurisdictions will also include some of these other incentives here, again, as a way to sort of offset. Some of the lost revenue from affordable units. That that this requirement brings. So examples of that fee reductions or waivers, something we've we've also talked about. And this when paired with things like perhaps increased building height of height bonus or a floor area ratio bonus. Um can be especially impactful together. Uh and again, offsetting some of those costs of requiring a developer to um to forego revenue of of a market rate housing unit. So parking reductions has also been been discussed. Uh we know that's a it's a touchy subject or it's a difficult. Strategy to implement in Lake Forest Park just due to the the lack of on-street parking and and some of your neighborhoods. And so none of these would are are sort of things that we would recommend just as a blanket provision that you put over every single parcel in your city. Again, that's why there's needs to be careful consideration if you're going to to offer reduced or eliminated off-street parking requirements for. Um for certain types of housing or affordable units. Um looking into where it makes the most sense to do that. And similarly for for a height bonus currently, um most of your zoning allows for up to thirty feet, which can be enough for for a three-story dwelling in most cases. Um but increasing or allowing to to thirty-five feet or greater in exchange for affordable units. And you might then get um. Get some of that additional affordability, additional flexibility. Um and this is one again where you could be, that could be applied. Uh in in only certain areas of your of your city, or maybe having a smaller footprint, but allowing for greater height could allow for more some flexibility around. Areas where there are are critical areas or existing tree canopy that you don't want to be disturbed. Uh and then the last one here are FAR bonuses. That um means you're adjusting, you're creating a system where you allow additional. For area ratio, additional this essentially bulk of the building. With the increase of number of units and or with the provision of affordable units. And so this is another one where there is a a baseline requirement by by commerce within the middle housing model code for tier one and tier two cities. Uh they recommend a minimum FAR of zero point six for a single unit dwelling. And then increasing by zero point two for each additional unit up to six units. Uh in Portland, there's another example where they actually start FAR for a single family unit of at uh point four. And then increase by point one for each additional unit up to four, and then there are other bonuses offered for for affordability. So this has the added benefit or sort of has two benefits. One is which you, you know, you increase. You allow for an increased building size, which again can can make a a bill or a project pencil um. By and therefore incentivizing more units while you're also sort of suppressing the the viability of just a single unit. Or by decreasing the size that a single family uh dwelling could be. Um so this is a strategy that that has been implemented um around the region and and to um to effect. Um though again, typically in combination with some of these other strategies, so um. So the the message here is uh that these are some of your options. There would need to be further study to calibrate these to your local market, decide where and how you want to apply these, but likely a suite of these strategies. Will be most effective. There would need to be further study to calibrate these to your local market, decide where and how you want to apply these, but likely a suite of these strategies will be most effective. Again, no single tool would be sort of your silver bullet to affordability or getting more middle housing built. Especially affordable, income restricted, affordable housing. So the other thing I'll plant and then I'll pause, see if, if folks have questions before moving on to a couple of case studies, but. Financing and other considerations, so if, if the focus is around increasing affordable units, especially homeownership programs. Those programs can be challenging for small, small cities to, to, to manage. Rental properties can be a little, little simpler. In a way, the financing and the ongoing management is, is, is less so. But so on, ongoing management of affordable units can be a challenge, especially with, with the limited staff that, that is available like Forest Park. So if serious sort of about implementing these sort of, of programs, it'll be really important to lean on your, your community partners, your regional partners. The King County Housing Authority, perhaps partnering with some of the community land trusts that work in the region. Can be an effective option to create affordable homeownership opportunities and again, having a, a partner that, that would help manage and maintain that housing in perpetuity, maintain it affordably in perpetuity. Another consideration around financing is the creation of Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Would allow the city to, to build up some resources to then directly invest either through, you know, providing financial incentives to developers or actually investing in land to then hold for use in something like a community land trust. Or as a, as an offer of land to, to reduce the costs of, of development for certain types of development. So obviously a lot, a lot to consider there, sort of more nuance related to this. But just wanted to raise, raise this and in particular around sort of home, affordable homeownership programs. Really being, being important to, to partner with your, your regional, your regional partners. So I, we have a couple of other case studies or high-level case studies that we, just to sort of show how some of these tools have been implemented around the region. Can pause that real quick if, if folks have, have questions or thoughts on, on any of that though.
I'd personally love to see the case studies. That might help generate some questions too, the applicability.
Yeah, definitely, so. First case, so, so looking at Portland, our hometown, so I know that you had sort of indicated that you'd like to see some, some good case studies of similar, maybe similar sized communities. We have, there are some here that are, that are smaller than Portland, but uh, you know, the reality is when we sort of, the Department of Commerce has, you know, put forth this, this model code, they're requiring cities to adopt these types of, of programs or look into these types of programs right now, but most have not actually adopted them yet. And so it's difficult to, to study their implementation, especially over time and seeing how they've been effective yet. So Portland has the benefit of having been one of the first jurisdictions to, to implement some of these types of tools and strategies. And so, you know, starting in two thousand eight, been able to see how it has affected the construction of, of certain types of units and how many affordable units they've actually seen built over time. So there's a program in Portland called the Residential Infill Project. That's been, been tweaked a little bit over time, initially implemented in twenty eighteen. They utilize an FAR and unit bonus program as a part of this, so. In Portland, they, they allow for four units per lot citywide across most formerly single-family zoning designations. And then allow up to six if half of those are affordable. And then they offer an FAR bonus that increases with the number of units. Plus an FAR bonus if one unit is affordable. And so you're sort of ratcheting up both the allowed units and the size of the structure that's allowed while limiting the size of a single family home on those same lots. And this, so this has resulted in a pretty significant increase in permitting of fourplexes, some of which have been affordable. So you know, this is incentivizing just market rate middle housing as well as then some of the affordable units as well. Together with that, they've also offered some financial incentives, so SDC exemptions. That's, that's an easy one, so exempting developers. If a home is sold to household earning a hundred and twenty AMI or rental at sixty percent AMI and below. And they also offer home buyer opportunity limited tax exemption program, so a ten-year tax exemption for any units sold to households earning a hundred and twenty percent AMI or below. So both programs that focus really around, around homeownership. Though again, not, also rental, but you'll see that in both cases or most cases, the percentage of area median income is, is lower when you're focusing on rental housing. And so these have, both of these programs altogether have seen five hundred and fifty-five applications over the, the six years of the program being in place. Another case study here in Tigard or a couple case studies, so Tigard, a little bit of a larger community than Lake Forest Park, but a suburb of Portland that has instituted a middle housing revolving loan fund. So they actually used ARPA funds to, to see this, but this provides short-term construction loans, so opting sort of gap financing and construction phase of a project to develop for sale middle housing and then a requirement of this program is at least thirty percent of units must be offered for sale under a hundred percent area median income. So just an example of a potential sort of financial program that a city could develop to, to support the type of housing they're wanting to see. Another community, this one in Washington, more rural than Lake Forest Park, but interesting in its own right due to the fact that it's, it's a fairly small community. San Juan County, which has some of the, which are the most robust community land trusts in the nation, some, some nationally regarded CLTs that operate there. And also quite uniquely offers some density bonuses in rural and sort of semi-rural areas that are tied to affordability. We're actually working with them right now and going through a process of advising them on, on some of these incentives, because in some cases, this, this, where there's a requirement to include affordability with additional boat or density, there's something called a rural residential cluster, so they want to see cluster development in some of these sort of semi-rural areas. But with a fifty-year affordability requirement tied to them. In some, there's been a lot of feedback around that, that requirement has, has really made development unfeasible in most of those areas. So it's, it's a good example in terms of, of a community trying to incentivize the type of development they have, but then also needing to be careful about how that's calibrated to your, to your local market. But then wanting to point out just that their, their CLTs operate here, provide subsidized housing, most of the subsidized housing in the islands. And it's unique in the sense that it's, it's for the most part not, or entirely not your traditional sort of low-income subsidized light tech apartments. There haven't been any apartments over two stories really built on the island since in the last two or three decades. Most of the affordable housing that's been built recently is in the form of sort of smaller cluster development. Some, some attached dwellings, duplexes, triplex and fourplexes sort of in mixed communities. And, and almost entirely provided by these CLTs that operate there. So just a good example of, of working with partners. The, the county also provides, did initiate a affordable housing fund that is operated at the county level, that's provided some of the funding to these projects and working with their local CLTs. So I think those are, there's more information in our memo that we provided. Those are the case studies that we pulled up here, the next few slides we have are just around dimensional standards and ADU location, so sort of shifting a little bit. So I'll stop there to see if folks have any, any questions or any discussion sort of amongst your, amongst yourselves as well, this is meant to spur further discussion and see if you all think this is the right direction to head towards in terms of, of further study and, and all of these areas.
I just have one question, just. Do you, do you sort of bundle the idea of like a cottage housing development? Is that, I mean, yes, they are cheaper, but is that affordable? To me, it's a, just a more diverse or it's a different type of housing that because it's smaller, tends to cost less. But I don't think of it really in terms of this is getting at affordability, but so where do you lump that in the way you talk about it? Like if you had a debt ceiling bonus, is that not affordability or is that about encouraging a more diverse portfolio of housing?
So it's a good question and I think in, in a way, two sides of the same coin. Yana, when, when you say affordable though, are you referring to, you know, like big A, actual like subsidized or income restricted affordable housing?
I guess that's what I'm asking you is, is that, you know, I guess there's little A, big A, that is what it sounds like, that we could incentivize certain types of housing with certain tools without any connection to AMI, right? Or, you know, and/or we can incentivize based on income thresholds, but those might be different tools for different types of housing.
Yes, correct, so. In general, what, what I've been talking about or when I, we've been talking about affordability, I'm, I'm talking about income restricted affordable housing. Because that, that's sort of the, the sentiment that we've heard from you all is that maybe in going above these minimum requirements, you'd want there to be some, maybe some requirement that, that's tied to affordability. But in general, so I'll, I'll point to the Portland example. You know, so here they're allowing four units base as a base, but then they're also offering bonuses to allow up to six units or in some cases more, depending on the part of the city that are not tied to affordability. And this is meant to just incentivize more density, more diversity and to your point, Yana, typically smaller units which are inherently going to be more affordable. So they're trying, they want to get more units built in general, which by providing that additional supply is providing more affordability. Inherently, but then they are also providing additional bonuses if developers provide income restricted affordability as well. So often these are sort of coupled together and it's, it is somewhat of a question or a, a decision to be made in terms of what you, what you're valuing here and, and you can be valuing both at the same time in terms of the types of housing and diversity you're wanting to incentivize. Matty, I see your, your hand is raised?
Yeah, I wanted just to ask, so frequently we, we are talking about density and, and for me that continues to be challenging because it doesn't. It's not, I don't know what that's solving exactly, but I, just a moment ago, you did say diversity of housing. And when we think about affordability, whether it's the big A or little A, aren't there kind of? Am I right in assuming that there are sort of two ways to that? One is having a diversity of housing, different sizes, since housing is typically priced on a per square foot basis. And then the other are, you know, particular mandates, right, or other policy pieces, is that? Is that fair to say that you can get to improved affordability or at least access points in a community by? I'm just thinking as we start to incentivize things, should we be incentivizing not for density but for diversity of housing sizes?
Yes, I, I think it's to a certain extent, it's semantics and a density can be a can be a flashpoint, it can be a touchy word.
It just doesn't mean enough, right?
For sure, for sure, and it, I mean, it's not that there's two ways, I think they're, they're accomplishing two different things, right? There's a need for all of these types of housing within your community and within your housing market. Currently, right away in this Lake Forest Park is not unique in this, the majority of housing is just a single dwelling, right? Which we've all known how is not affordable to the vast majority of people that are looking for a home. So by allowing for two units, three units, four units. Inherently, and there are controls that we're, that we're talking about here, say by controlling for floor area ratio, you can limit the size of a single unit, the size of the, the building for a single unit and then maybe allow a, a larger building for four units, just theoretically. But those units are all going to be smaller, right? So then they'll inherently be more affordable.
Not necessarily, right? That's, I think that's what, one of the things we're looking at from you is that our neighboring communities have taken that route, but they're, you know, with three floors, they're able to provide a larger house than the original single-family house that was there. And so now you go from having a, maybe a nine hundred square foot, single-family house to having four, you know, twenty-one hundred square foot townhomes. And so I think in that case, I think that's part of what we've been kicking around is how do we incentivize keeping, you know, the overall square footage varied, so that we're not just simply, you know, making way for even more expensive homes than whatever was there to begin with.
Yeah, no, it, it's a good point, it's, you know, the, the conversation that, that John here was saying earlier, just the cost of housing right now in general for a a thousand square foot home being able to sell for, for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When, when I'm saying by providing more units, they're going to inherently be more affordable, it might not be as affordable as your, your fifty-year-old single-family dwelling is in your community, because it is new construction, but it probably would be more affordable than a single unit being built there instead, right?
Well, sort of, I, I want to clarify that, one of the things, at least from my point of view is that, is that I don't think we can assume that density necessarily gets us where we want to go because of the fact that you can push the overall square footage up, which doesn't necessarily give you the diversity. If we continue in Lake Forest Park to only have, you know, the majority of our homes being two thousand square feet and above, then we haven't done, you know, what we, one of the things we're aiming to do, which is to create that diversity of square footage. You know, u- unit by unit, which can help diversify at least the cost of that, the housing. I agree, it's not affordable, you know, to pay eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a thousand square feet. But like you were saying, if, if the larger home that is there, anyway, I just, I think we're really looking for mechanisms, I hope, that help control some of the total square footage of a unit.
I, I think you, there, can I jump in for a second? Also, just, this conversation's made me think about land value also, and I think that one, one jargony way that we start talking about things in regards to density is really about land value, because if, if you have more units on the same value of land, then the, you know, the cost of the land decreases, you know. With things like the FAR bonus or, you know, conversation that we were talking a little bit about, that can take a different form, that's not necessarily maxing it out, like you said, Matty, and for large townhomes, but it is a sort of economic, basic economic consideration of, of, about the value of the land that I think can can lead to that conclusion about density that, I, you know, that, or the way we talk about it anyway. And it doesn't necessarily mean density as far as size, just in terms of maximizing or at least reducing the, the cost to the developer of, of the, of the amount of, of land. So anyway, I just wanted to put land value in the conversation there.
Thank you very much, Andrew.
Melissa, see if you got your hand raised?
Yeah, actually, for one, I wanted to thank Maddie for bringing that up about the square footage of houses. Because not everybody, I will agree, not everybody wants to live in a larger house. And we are, we are an example of that, we have a thirty-three hundred square foot house that we, it, it, at the time, we needed that space, we don't need it anymore, but we can't find a smaller house, doesn't matter, now we're moving to California. But you know, that's, that was what we wanted to do, we thought at first, well, we'll, we'll sell this house and we'll downsize and there's no place to downsize. I think assuming that people want larger houses is wrong, some people don't want to have to take care of a larger house. Me. Also, I, I, I have another question and it's regarding like, as we're looking at these different styles of homes and, you know, trying to fit more onto these lots. Do you have examples of this sort of housing in places that look like Lake Forest Park?
Not, not on this, on the, on the screen here to share with you. But you know, there are, I think Tigard is a better example, it doesn't have the same sort of It doesn't have the same sort of critical areas that Lake Forest Park does. It's a slightly bigger community. San Juan County certainly has some of the, a lot of critical area constraints. But I, I think the, I mean, the best answer to your question, Melissa, is that Lake Forest Park is unique, just like every community. And so figuring out the best way to tailor these tools in a way that, that you all are comfortable with and that doesn't say infringe on your, your critical areas and environmentally constrained areas is, is sort of the, the point of, of this discussion. I think there's ways that you can integrate various types of housing, whether it's cottage housing, which allows some flexibility in the placement of smaller units on a lot. Whether it's allowing, let's say, additional height instead of, you know, lot coverage, so it's not cover or not bending up to some of your, your tree canopy. There, there's ways that you can, can implement these that, and that's why there's sort of careful consideration that is needed to make sure that it is implementable and flexible enough to work within your specific constraints.
Can I also add, in our, in the larger report that we did last year, we did go and find some examples of existing middle housing of various ages in Lake Forest Park. Mostly duplexes, but there were a couple slightly larger things or more units on a lot that are non-conforming. And, and the purpose was not to, you know, call out non-conforming uses in a negative way, but just to demonstrate, you know, that people have on and offs throughout time, throughout the past, you know, few decades, built these type of things in the community there. So I, I don't have, we don't have it here to pull up, but it's in there and probably worth a glance too, as you work through this, because it could give some inspiration, even if they're older units for ways in which it could, you know, integrate the community.
And an apology, if we don't have sort of the best examples on these slides here with you, but short answer is the communities all over the region and really the country are, are integrating these types of housing into their communities. There might be parts of, of Lake Forest Park where, where you deem it, it wouldn't make sense, maybe areas that are more critically are constrained by critical areas than others, but and, and then other neighborhoods, it might be, might make more sense to, to allow additional flexibility. Which is again, why it's not, we're not recommending sort of a one size fits all, allow, you know, however many units on every lot across the city. Some nuance in where it's applied and how these incentives are applied is, is going to be the important decision point.
Thank you.
Yana, did I, did I answer your question earlier?
Yeah, thanks.
So we have just a couple of other slides here. One, I know we've, we've brought up these maps before around dimensional standards and this is just showing an example, sort of a blunt instrument here in this form of analysis, but showing how big of a difference maximum lot coverage makes in terms of the feasibility. Just, we're talking about the physical feasibility of getting a duplex onto a lot. So this is, this is going beyond sort of incentives for the additional units or affordability, but more saying this is another consideration going forward, if you want to incentivize even the minimum density on your, in your city, which is a duplex now. This could make a big difference in, in seeing more lots become viable for that type of development. And I know that street frontage requirements was also something that's been brought up in the past. Decreasing or removing the street frontage requirements would definitely increase the potential lots as well, would allow for more flexibility potentially for, for flag lots or some of the, you know, lot subdivisions we talked, as we're, we're talked about earlier. And so more study is needed sort of on that to, to right-size it, but that's also sort of along with lot coverage. Something that could open up a lot more lots to make something like a duplex feasible within the city.
And, and also in the, we, we didn't put up all the maps here, we did this for other types and sizes of housing, but in relation to our just conversation just now on small units, I was also just thinking back to, you know, when we were looking at cottage clusters and where you might be able to fit some, some detached, smaller units, which seemed like that might be a, another typology that's kind of ticking several boxes here. You know, in terms of not necessarily maxing out a, a lot with a large building, but something that, you know, provides a kind of flexibility that Melissa was talking about and Matty, and also preserves, you know, some space. So, but again, with, with the 25 to 35% lot coverage, that, that becomes difficult. So it's not necessarily just looking at lot coverage increase to put a, a larger single building. But if you're putting small or detached, small buildings, that also requires, that could be, you know, an avenue towards getting towards that too. And then you could combine it with whatever other requirements that might make, that might make sense. So it's, it's another tool in the, in the kit.
The other one that we wanted to just bring up again, that I know we've, we've touched on previously, especially in some of your, your neighborhoods with very deep lots like this, or some of the homes might be further back on the lot off of the street. Just one example where it could make sense to allow for an ADU to be located in the front yard or the side yard of that parcel. And currently it's only allowed in the back. So that sort of flexibility and location, especially in some of your larger lots could allow for, again, additional viability of, of getting an ADU, which again, if it's, if it's a smaller, or due to it being a smaller dwelling is likely going to come with, with more affordability than a, another primary unit, right?
This example that you just brought up, I just want to point out, like, that's a very heavily treed area. It has enormous trees, like ones that it would take five people to put your arms around. So I just want to point that out. I, I'm having a hard time envisioning that kind of density in that area.
Yeah, it might not be on, on every lot, but again, if, if there's more flexibility in sort of the way that a structure could be located on a, on a lot, especially some of these, these lots that are, you know, half an acre. Or in this case, well over an acre, you might be able to find a location for a 650 square foot ADU within that, that tree canopy that wouldn't be, you know, obstructed or, or constrained by those critical areas. Not saying it would be viable in, in every lot, and that's where some of your environmental considerations and critical area restrictions would, would also come into play.
David, I, I just wanted to offer, only because it was, it's, it's, it continues to sort of float in and out as a conversation piece, but I think there's this assumption that Lake Forest Park has all of these really large parcels and it's so unusual compared to neighboring cities. But the reality is, is we have like a really challenged topography and from super sandy slopes to, you know, wetlands and so forth. And this isn't like, hey, you know, tree hugging and environmentalism is an excuse for not doing, you know, more development or whatever. But like sincerely, already expensive land becomes even more expensive to build in those kinds of environments. I think it's really challenging for our small city staff to manage, you know, that increased demand to develop in these kinds of spaces. It, there's, there are so many lots that have really challenging building conditions and because of the housing situation in our region, it can be very affordable, you know, it can pencil out to develop it. But we end up with very expensive houses, degradation to the environment around it. And so I just, I just wanted to say for the public record, our lots are big, but very often they're incredibly challenged environmentally. And I think we have a huge obligation to continue to be strong stewards of the environment and for the ecosystem services they provide our region. So just want to dispel any myth around that.
So Andrew and David, so given what Manny just said, there are considerations in our, in our community as, as I'm sure you're aware. What would be your guiding question, given the information that you've given us, right? What would be your guiding questions for us moving forward to discuss? Or to, you know, give some, some foundation to our conversations moving on forward?
Yeah, good question. So I think number one is, I mean, the general question of what, what do you want to incentivize? Are you incentivizing greater diversity through more types of housing? And or are you focusing more on a big A affordable, income restricted affordable housing? And it doesn't have to be one or the other. So do you want to, to look into more strategies for, you know, okay, we're allowing a duplex now. How do we actually want duplexes or how do we actually want to get duplexes built? Or how do we actually want to see middle housing built in generally, which could be a triplex or a fourplex in some cases? That's where some of those strategies around, like say, an FAR bonus, fee waivers, that all, all the tools we talked about could be incentivized for even market rate housing. If, if you're focused on just wanting to see a greater diversity of housing, because the, the reality is you, if you're only allowing a duplex without any form of incentive, and I'm saying this without having run any numbers, but I, I don't think you'll see many duplexes built just due to the, the feasibility or viability of, of a two unit structure. So considering whether there are, you, you want to incentivize sort of a greater diversity beyond that, or even just for a duplex, if you want to use some of these incentives for, for that. Then the next question is, are you really focused on creating income restricted affordable housing? I think then there are more considerations around that for further study and calibration, understanding really what are the costs of, of, of development? Would need more study to, to ensure that you're not, you're not requiring something that's simply unfeasible to be built by the development community. And so understanding where is that threshold of? Would we need to allow up to say four units to be built to get any level of affordability? Otherwise, we're not actually going to see anything because it's, it's still too expensive. Or maybe the threshold is even higher and which, which lets you know that it's going to be very difficult to actually incentivize affordability in middle housing. And I'm just talking hypothetically now because we haven't run any numbers on that. So that's sort of a long question, David, but I think that's the, the crux of it is, what are you trying to incentivize? Are you wanting to incentivize more generally a diversity of housing or are you singularly focused on sort of income restricted or do you want a mix of both? That's, that's one big one. Andrew, any, anything else come to mind for you?
I mean, I hear, I, I, I wonder if there's, yeah, I'm trying to frame some question around this, you know, a large lot, environmental constraints, reality. And, and I, I'm not, not sure exactly here at the moment how to phrase that, but I think that you know, it, if the community priority or the commission priority, you know, i- is to, you know, continue as Matty said, to, to safeguard the importance of the environmental, you know, situation that you, that you have in the city. While also trying to balance that with increased affordability, I guess. I, I guess something has to give to some degree. And so one, one, one question would be what that, what, what that would, would be. And, you know, I, I guess that could be more density in places that aren't constrained, or it could be, you know, some type of more innovative techniques or, or things that are really gonna, you know, ensure that, that those areas are preserved, but that, that, you know, there's, there's a way to fit it in or, or whatever. So I, I don't know, that's not a very well phrased question either, but I, I think, I think that balance and, and really like digging into both sides of that balance will also be important. And that could be tied to the feasibility that David was just talking about and, and how the, how that priority balance fits with what's financially feasible. That's a little long-winded as well, sorry.
So I think two, yeah, two big questions sort of jumped to mind are that question about, are you incentivizing sort of baseline middle housing and or income restricted affordable housing, which would come with different tools or some of the same tools would apply differently. And then where do you want to focus it? Because there, you have different neighborhoods, we pointed out some of this in our report. So to Andrew's point, there are some more environmentally constrained areas, we probably want to be much more conservative with any tools you'd apply. But then there, maybe there are areas as a, as a community, it's more palatable or more desired to, to see an increase in, you know, in housing opportunity. And so that's where you might throw the whole kitchen sink of these tools and come up with a suite of tools that really makes it viable to see the types of housing you want to see. Whether it's duplex, whether that's a, a fourplex with a, with an affordable unit, et cetera, cottage housing. So I think identifying the specific housing types you want to incentivize, where you think it's most ideal to, to incentivize it. And then needing to, to come up with the right suite of tools to apply to them. So I, I know that it's maybe not a fully satisfying sort of answer or conclusion to the discussion today, because ultimately a lot of these will require further study and sort of calibration to ensure that you're really incentivizing the things you want. And also not at the same time disincentivizing any of the development that you want to see.
I don't think there was supposed to be an easy answer.
I think those are really good, you know, thought tracks for us too, because that was what we contemplated a lot at our last meeting is we have a lot of ideas, but we don't want to, you know, run into any unintended consequences. And so, and, and this is, you know, outside of our expertise and scope for a lot of us. So appreciate kind of channeling those paths for us. And I think that we have a good runway for what we need to talk about and also what we've signaled that this is something of great importance to us and that we want to further investigate. But I think we can all agree that this isn't like a one meeting kind of thing where we just take it and go. We have a lot of learning to do, a lot of investigation to do. So appreciate you guys weighing in on that and kind of help, help guiding us down that path.
Absolutely, the, the last thing maybe I'll say is, you know, mentioned your housing authority, community land trust, other regional partners, but also your development community. I think as you work through devising what tools will work, you'll need to be engaged with developers as well. Because they'll be able to tell you what's actually feasible and what pencils. And so that's sort of a part of the process of calibrating these incentives and tools in a way that, that can actually, actually work.
Yeah, that's great. That was one thing that I think everyone here signaled that we need to talk to somebody who's actually doing it and, and can put, you know, price tags on things and what would truly move the needle rather than us investing, you know, months and months of work to see no, no products coming out of it. So that's great, glad, glad to hear that we're on the same, same path. Any other questions for Leland? I know we, we beg to get you guys back, so if there's anything else for the good of the order.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's been, it's been great and happy we got to come back today. It's been a pleasure working with you guys the past couple of years.
Thank you so much.
And good luck with next steps.
Thank you. All right, we, 10 minutes to go here. Mark, do you want to talk about apparently the official election of the chair and vice chair now?
Before we leave, item A, can I ask that if we have consensus on the draft development regulations as they currently are written? Do you want to pull on that? On, on, this is mostly for the 60 day commerce review, right? And planning commission will hold a public hearing and you can continue and you tweet these, right? But if there's consensus on meeting the mandate, and this is representative, representative of that, I can send it to commerce, and I think that's where the mission is at. Okay, just wanted to confirm it before I sent anything, but thank you. Item B has been forwarded to this agenda from two prior agendas. Staff does not play a role other than we're asking for somebody to be elected chair or vice chair.
So if I can speak to that, we had a brief conversation at the end of the last meeting. Since then, I did some thinking and I communicated to Sam Cassidy, who had said he'd be willing to play either role. I conveyed to him and to Mr. Hoffman that I prefer to stay in the vice chair role and support and nominate Sam to be the new chair.
I would second Sam being the chair. I also just want to flag for this group here, Sam did share that he has a couple conflicts in the summer that maybe in our April meeting, when he's here, we can all speak to, do we want to maybe look at an alternative date? I know summers are tricky, but that was just one concern that he had. So want everyone to be aware of that, there were two dates. That was just one concern that he had, so want everyone to be aware of that, there are two dates. And that he has issues with, and maybe we can collectively talk about that as a group. To that end though, I would second Sam as, as chair. Is there any discussion on that? Any concerns or is everyone, is all those in favor?
Hi.
Yes, thank you.
Did somebody say something?
Yeah, thank you. That leaves one last item, that's vice chair.
I'm willing to continue, also willing to support others.
I moved that we nominate Yanni for vice chair. Thanks, Melissa. Second. Meredith, thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Good. All right. Party on. So, um, Mark, did you have any new business that you wanted to bring up? No new business, no reports and announcements. I guess just. Open it up, we have one more minute left in case there's some comment from our guests in the room.
Yeah, it's been great seeing you guys work through this challenging, biggest zoning upgrade that. All of our region has experienced and. One of the things, I've been forced to build bigger houses. Ultimately, you have to make a profit to be a business. And it's been very difficult to do that. And invite the, from twenty twenty to where we're at now, I've been experiencing building smaller. Homes. And that has allowed us to see that the public. When we list a cottage for sale, those fly off the shelves super fast. We end up building a bigger house to help subsidize the. We, we can't make money building one house anymore. Just with pure cost of land and construction. And as we've done. Examples in Seattle of the three packs redo and attached main house and a daddy. Kind of sort of doesn't do too much because it ends up being like a townhouse project. And then they're too tight, people don't want to live in a too tight of a project. But then when we do, I do projects where we do a cottage and a main house and we do six, seven or five or four. And the cottages get multiple offers all the time because of that access price point. That people can have, and so I would. Recommend as a builder and developer that. Having as many tools as we can. Within a piece of property to allow us to do as many detached units. Like cottage communities are, like the cottage company used to do fifteen years ago, and they still do some projects. That allows us to creativity like a project I did recently, there was exceptional tree. In the front, so we put the big house in the back and put a cottage in the front yard, so we could save the large tree. And then we dealt with some ECAs, steep slopes and. We got some exemptions from that because there's previous homes in that area, so we built, built within that. Building footprint, but I wanted to stress is like. If the two units ends up being required as like a duplex. Most people desire, we've been experiencing, we've been seeing people move from a townhouse. To our cottages, they're willing to give up living in fourteen hundred, sixteen hundred square foot townhouse. And move into a thousand square foot cottage. Because they have their own yard, they're not attached to somebody else, they feel like it's a starter home, it's more livable. And so even in one of my last projects, one of Olson Koon Diggs guys tried to buy one of them, which I was surprised and honored. But the point is, is like, the big houses that are selling for one point seven, those move much slower because. You got to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars down just to get a loan. And then those mortgages are like ten, twelve thousand dollars a month. So allowing us to do a lot of detached options. And in some of the jurisdictions, they're allowing us. We're not calling it duplexes, but it's more just unit, and then you have your bag of choices of. Okay, it is attached or it's detached. We build, say we can do three or four units on a single family or a residential lot. We'll figure out a way to. Do as many detached as possible, because that's what people want and desire. And the more we can do of the smaller ones, then that mitigates us having to do a bigger house on the lot. To subsidize the land cost and the construction cost. So as you guys decide the tools for how to do the smaller housing. I, I would advise you not to require us to have to do attached. Because then, you know, in Seattle, we're requiring, you know, the four units. Next thing you know, I'm like just doing townhouses. People don't want to live in town, they don't want to live vertically over three or four floors, fourteen hundred square feet. They'd rather live on a thousand square feet on two floors. With a nice little yard and usable space, not attached and someone towering over them. So I just wanted to pass that along that detached is really. In-demand thing from the public that we're seeing as we're selling and as we're talking to brokers. With them, that they're selling their townhouses and wanting a little, they'd rather live in something smaller. Because it's their own, it's kind of like a home as opposed to. Three or four floors with postage stamp little lots on us.
That's really helpful feedback, I appreciate.
Yeah.
You shared that.
I, I have a little comment on that. I, I can't remember if it was Melissa, but. And, and ultimately, the people tell you what they want, right? So as he's mentioning. If you have three homes that go up for sale and two, two smaller homes that are detached, get. Five times the amount of wires, then obviously there, but, but also, I, I can't remember if it was Melissa, I think it was, but. Are you going to California?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, um. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm. On the older side of, you know, as we go through stages of life, and then there's younger side, then all these, all different stages, but. I think it's a mindset change, I mean. You know. Times are taking, we're, we're, we've got to become more European or more. Japanese or whatever, it's, we need smaller housing and, and, and. I agree with Melissa, I mean personally, I don't want a big house, I have some big houses now, I don't really want them, I want, I want, I want to create some, I want them as smalls. And, and I think there's a demand for that. In, in both younger generations and older generations, and I think there's a need for it because. At the end of the day, smaller square footage is more affordable. And that kills two birds with one stone, and it might be. Uh, the right thing, meeting the right mindset of the modern times that we live in. A lot of technologies different, you know, commute, commuting is different. Transportation is getting different, we, you know, Seattle got library after waiting for forty years, okay, but. Now we're a little late to the party, but.
Okay, can I beat the chair to this question? Can I have your name for the minutes?
Bill Norman, Norman.
David, did you have something?
Uh, yeah, sorry, I know my, my time has passed, but just that made me think of something I wanted to, to mention and just. As you do move forward and sort of thinking through what tools you want to utilize and what to incentivize, remember to look back at. The updated comp plan, policy goals and policies we've developed. Together, that, you know, what we just said, wanting to. Provide more diversity for aging population, also for, for new families, starter homes. That the types of things you're wanting to accomplish more, sort of. Yeah, on the policy side, let that guide your discussions and decision-making going forward. Just wanted to, wanted to raise that up.
Thank you. All right. Well, with that. We have our next meeting on April eighth, sounds like everybody's gonna be there, except for I think maybe David has a conflict. So I will, I guess we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Emotionally adjourned.
Thank you, Melissa, Melissa first, Maddie second, thank you both. All right, everyone's in favor, I assume, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Take care, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.